Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the February 28th, 2022 council meeting to order, please. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Ms. Cram.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Councilman Aludo, would you like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America, and to which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott Dring is here this evening to update us on the Dublin hospitality industry. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity. If I may, Mayor, I'd like to introduce our incoming, our new board president from Cardinal Health, Jalen Rossett, back there waiting, so she's here for the first time, so thank you for that. I want to give you kind of a quick update on where we stand in the hospitality industry. This is the hotel occupancy, so this is the percentage of rooms that are booked here in the city of Dublin, and you can kind of see 2021, 51%, which is a bit of an uptick from last year. To kind of put this in perspective, what it means, about every percentage point is about $1.5 million, and that's a conservative number for our economic impact. So if you compare 2021 to pre-pandemic 2019, that's almost $33 million that we've lost from the last two years or so. Average daily rate, this is what the average person pays at a Dublin hotel. Again, this year, we had a big uptick, $1,104. I think what this tells us is that the economy, the price point didn't deter people last year from traveling. People were paying, and I'm sure many of you traveled, and you noticed there were a lot of high rates out there traveling, and same was the case here in the city of Dublin. Bed tax, last year, $2.3 million for the city. Good news, bad news, 56% increase over last year in bed tax. If you compare the 2019, we're still down 36%, so we have a ways to go to get to that point. Our restaurant industry had a good bounce-back year last year. Most experts believe it'll still take a year or so to get back to where we were in 2019. And I can tell you, the restaurant industry are still feeling the pinch of supply, food costs, and labor. I can tell you that entire U.S. hospitality industry, there's 1.7 million open jobs right now, so there's a lot of jobs out there. The industry's going to take a while to get those people back as well. Good news is that 87% of Americans have plans to travel in the next six months, so everyone's predicting another record summer, especially from the high destination, beach travel destinations, so hopefully you guys all have your reservations if you're going to the beach, because you're probably too late at this point. A couple of quick results, I know we're only two months into the year, but our regional campaign launches this week. This is the campaign that you are funding for, so thank you again for that. It goes through the month of August. It's a leisure message, obviously, trying to get some of that 87% that planning to travel. The regional campaign, we're focused in Pittsburgh, Detroit, Indianapolis, Lexington, and Charleston, Huntington are the key markets we're in, and we'll continue to update you on the results as we work through that. National media coverage is always an important part of what we do. Last year, again, we had record coverage in there, magazines like Forbes, USA Today, a lot of regional magazines, Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, especially those kind of things that we target highly, and we'll continue to pitch those and secure those. The Only in Dublin video series has been a huge hit. That's where we highlight a Only in Dublin restaurant attraction retail. We have six or seven local businesses that we featured that have seen a lot of business as a result of this. This month is DVT, if you haven't seen that. And our trails continue to generate dollars, bottom line, for our restaurants and our retail stores. The Celtic Cocktail Trail is now in 18 stores and restaurants across the city of Dublin, and the Ferry Door Trail is in 11 downtown Dublin establishments, and that generates dollars, it's trackable, we see a huge uptake during, especially this spring, through the fall, and we refresh those every year as well, so we'll be refreshing those here in the next couple of weeks. We're attending new shows, that's generating shows, that are generating new leads and pieces of business, and in front of you, you have the destination guide as well. I want to jump back quick, might take the couple of minutes I have left with you and kind of talk big picture on the landscape of travel and tourism. I'm throwing this back up here, this chart, the hotel occupancy, but I think corporate travel historically has been our bread and butter in this market. For the 20 years I've been here, in 25 years, we've tracked this kind of data, corporate travel is about 60% to 65% of our business year-round, so it's a huge piece of what we do. It generates tens of millions of dollars, jobs, awareness, et cetera, et cetera. So the question is, how do we get from the 51% you see there back up to the pre-pandemic of 73% without corporate travel? And the easy answer is, we can't. There's no way. There's just not enough demand out there in business. So we have to figure out other ways to do it, and we need to, we can't do status quo in the future. We need to figure out other ways to generate business. I think corporate travel will eventually come back down the road, but, you know, we've talked to Jalen, her folks, and other folks that go around Cardinal, other businesses, and they're doing hybrid model, they're just not traveling they were in 2019, so we have to deal with that. Another one that kind of points to this as well is by day, and you can kind of see here Sunday through Saturday, the occupancy by day. So the question is, you know, how do we recover, how do we generate business if we don't have corporate travel? And the answer right now, from our perspective, is sports and leisure travel. And if you look at these charts here, the green chart represents an average of occupancy per day, 2014, 19, and then '21, the blue is the blue. So obviously, corporate travel carried the weight. Tuesday, Wednesday have always been our busiest days, the last 20 years we've been doing this. Look at how it plummeted in 2021, almost 30 percentage points, and look what is the highest in driving the market now, it's Friday and Saturday night, or Friday and Saturday is the highest point in our, so we totally flipped in terms of when our visitors are coming, what they're coming for. So our thought is that, you know, there is room to grow for the leisure and sports market. If you look at Friday, Saturday, you have 40 points on Saturday, what, 32 points to grow on, I'm sorry, 40 points on Friday, 32 points to grow on Saturday, and a lot of these events, and sports and leisure can expand over during the week as well. Give you a quick update on, I know for you quick on our youth athletic market here in Dublin. Nationwide, it's a huge market, 180 million visitors a year, $103 billion in sales. You've heard my rhetoric on why do we want visitors here, but I'll say it again in 30 seconds, but visitors mean economic impact. When they come here, when they're spending money in our hotels, that's actually their least expense. They're spending most money in the restaurants, retail, and other things in the community. So they're dumping a lot of impact, economic impact in our community, which creates jobs, which affects your income tax, which is so important to the foundation of this community. It obviously generates bed tax, and then awareness is kind of the hidden gem, and, you know, anytime someone comes here in Dublin, you know, a visit is really their first introduction to a community. So if they're going back and they're looking for someplace to move their family or relocate their business, the experience they have in some of these events, they're going to think of Dublin. These events are resilient, they never go down. If you look at 9/11, it didn't go down, 2008 recession, it didn't go down, and a major pandemic, it didn't go down. You know, us as parents, we don't sacrifice our kids when it comes to sports and traveling and stuffs, and that shows, we had a 319% increase last year in the sports hotel room nights. Our big annual events that we currently have, standing events are between soccer and lacrosse and baseball, and we work hard to visit Dublin to generate new piece of business. Rugby is coming here this summer, it's a high school rugby championship, it'll be at Dari, Australian football, and in high school football as well. But there's a but. So with all that said, we're losing business in the sports market to other cities, and we're at risk of losing business of our current events as well. A couple of examples here, and these are just in Ohio, excuse me, for the last year and a half, so these are new establishments. Cedar Point, you see the top left there, that's a new facility in Sandusky, Ohio, has 20 indoor basketball courts, 10 volleyball courts, it has a baseball lit and synthetic fields outside, and they're actually building a new esports complex that'll be open this fall as well up there. Warren County, down in Cincinnati, I believe that's in Lebanon area is where this is, it's an outdoor facility, has 10 synthetic fields, has baseball diamonds, I think 10 diamonds, and then they have a huge, flexible, multipurpose space that they can bring anything they want, from rugby to lacrosse to whatever they feel like as well. And then the big enchilada that's opening this summer is in Butler County, and it's in Hamilton, and it's called Spooky Nook, and it's 1 point, what is the number, 1.2 million square feet, 46 basketball courts, 28 volleyball courts, an indoor track, they have synthetic fields and lights outside as well, so that's a huge. So this is what, and just it's not up here, is the Pro Football Canton Hall of Fame, you may have heard that they're redoing that and expanding it to attract the youth market as well. So I guess the takeaway from all this is that our travel market's going to change, and we fared well in COVID. I think the sports market and leisure market carried us, even with the dip in corporate travel, but we need to figure it our way down long-term on what we're going to do. And I can tell you, with corporate being down, leisure group and sports is our greatest opportunity. And a lot of these facilities, our facilities unfortunately just can't compete with what you're seeing right here. And I don't have a big ask tonight, I think it's more of an information, so you all know what the market looks like and what the landscape looks like, but, you know, is raising three kids in this community, I know our athletic facilities sometimes were a challenge, we had to go to Plain City and other places to do stuff. I know the youth market or the youth population is growing outrageously, especially up in the Jerome area, so that's going to be a stress on the current facilities you have. If you talk to DY, Dublin Youth Athletics, they are looking for facilities as well, so I think there's an opportunity there as well. So I guess if there's a way for us to create athletic amenities for our year residents and our residents, at the same time, creating some kind of attraction that'll allow us to infuse millions of dollars into the community and share that, I think that's something that we'd be willing to chat with you, discuss, look forward to it, and help lead that discussion in any way we can. I think the other key thing and important part is that there's an opportunity here in central Ohio. There's nothing like this in central Ohio right now. It's inevitable that it'll come, the demand is too high, some community is going to do something like this. So I think the opportunity is there, but inevitably, it's going to happen. I want to end on this, I think Curry's going to help me, but this is, we created for, we worked, I'll let you watch this first, go ahead, and I'll talk to you about it after they play it. Thanks, bud.
I'm the master model builder for Legoland Discovery Center Columbus, and I'm here today building the Dublin Link Pedestrian Bridge. It's going to be an awesome project, can't wait for you guys to see it. Awesome project, can't wait for you guys to see it. Can't wait for you guys to see it. Hello!
Got a quick question. These athletic centers you showed us, are they privately held, or they, who's paying for them, and who's backing them?
They should be private events of some sort. Now, obviously, the point is that they're example, they're going to have a lot of money to do that, obviously, that's going to be right in the market, but all of them, and we do research on it, it doesn't harm all of the places where we do that, and it's a private project.
Friday through Sunday is when we have our biggest time, but Monday through Thursday is when you got to figure out how to generate business. You can't survive on Friday through Sunday for these tournaments. In the summertime, you can do week-long, but, you know, during the week, you know, is it, do you program it through local community, local athletics, local resident stuff? That's where the challenge comes. You can't be dark for more than half the week, or it's not fiscally feasible.
Notice that the staff put together a really neat map of Dublin, the word of fish. Have you seen that handout yet?
Yeah.
And I don't know if we ought to blow that up and put that in your tourism center, because, you know, it's got everything from tennis to you name it, things you can do in Dublin, I thought it's really well done, so.
Yep.
Just one of those promotional pieces, along with river boxes and other things, so when you stop in, here's what you can do while you're here. You can do the ferry thing, you can go do the Celtic Trail. So there's a lot to do when you go in there, and, you know, it's all displayed well, and so I hope we get a chance, if you haven't done it, to include all that.
Yeah, absolutely. The more stuff we have, the better.
And will we get to keep the Legoland Bridge?
For a price, you can have it.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions or anything for Scott? Scott, that was wonderful. I appreciate the information about what's going on around us, too, and I think that we probably ought to get a copy of that Lego bridge for Megan, so she can have it for Christmas. All right, thank you. This is a period of time where we have citizens' comments, an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone tonight present that wishes to make a comment or have any comments that we've received online? Lindsay?
Nothing so far, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, since there are no citizen comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove this item from the consent agenda, the minutes of February 14th, 2022 council meeting? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Second reading, public hearing, ordinance 03-22.
Amending the annual appropriations for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022.
Good evening, members of council.
Hi, Matt, how are you?
Hello, I'm great.
Matt Stifler is giving our staff report.
This ordinance is unchanged from its first hearing. Should council decide to proceed with resolution 07-22 later on tonight's agenda, council would recommend adopting this ordinance in order to finance that bid acceptance. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Matt, will we be discussing this relative to the other debt conversation we have about recalling on the bonds?
There's a bond refund discussion later, but it is not part of this conversation. We will be issuing some new debt associated with this project, but that will be a separate ordinance at next Monday night's council meeting.
But if those bonds were recovered, would it change the picture of the financing here, perhaps?
If those bonds were refunded, it would not change the need to fund new money in the amount of $1 million for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Introduction, first reading, public hearing of ordinances, and there are no ordinance for first reading this evening. Introduction, public hearing, vote on resolutions, resolution 05-22.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to section 8.04, paragraph C of the revised charter for the purchase of beer for the 2022 Dublin Irish Festival.
I want to do so.
Thank you. Our staff report is Allison Leroy. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. I have two resolutions tonight. The first is one that I have typically come to before, and it's for the purchase of beer from Superior Beverage. By state law, they are the only person that we can buy the Guinness and the Coors products, and they are our sponsor for Irish Festival, so they are a sole provider, and I can answer any questions you have on that one.
Allison, can you tell me, what normally is the expense, what do we buy? What's the value of that?
$155,000. Now, that varies from year to year.
Weather dependent.
Super weather dependent, and what we have to do is we have to buy all of it at first, but then when we can return anything that we don't actually end up using.
Thank you.
Are there any other requests to speak? Okay. Public comment on this? All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Resolution 06-22.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to section 8.04, paragraph C of the revised charter for the provider of tents, tables, and chairs for the 2022 Independence Day celebration and Dublin Irish Festival.
I want to do so.
And Allison is back.
And this is my second one tonight. This one's actually for Independence Day and Irish Festival. We have used O'Neill tents for more than 20 years for the Irish Festival. When we have gone out and tried to find somebody else who has the number of tents and tables and chairs in the market, they just don't exist in Ohio. We have been able to find some in Chicago and other places, but we, the value that we have with them being here, you know, we use the example, if a storm comes in on Thursday night and blows down a tent, we can easily have them go get another one. So it's been a great partnership, and they have not raised their rates in over 10 years, and they also donate 10% back of the bill, so we do get that discount on it. So we're confident that we're getting a good deal, and the service has been excellent.
Is there any public comment on this?
No.
Council questions or discussion?
No.
I hear they also have made some tents specifically for the Irish Festival, is that correct?
They have more than one. One of them that is kind of famous is the round tent that we use in the Brian Bruce area. They bought it for us 20 years ago, and no one has used it, nobody else has used this round tent, so it's kind of ours now.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Thank you, Allison. Resolution 07-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Deer Run Forest Main and Lift Station project.
I want to do so.
Paul Hammer Smith is our staff report tonight.
Parcel acquired from Muirfield Village Golf Club in approximately 12,750 feet of 16-inch forest main located along Dublin Road between Deer Run and Emerald Parkway. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for this project, and on January 25th, 2022, three bids were received and publicly opened by engineering staff. The project funding is as provided by the adoption this evening of ordinance 03-22. The project work is to commence in March and will require four major maintenance of traffic phases as described in the staff report. There is an interim completion date of November 11th, 2022, for the completion of the work on Dublin Road, and a final completion date of April 14th, 2023. Additionally, no construction will occur, and Dublin Road is to be restored prior to and during the Memorial Golf Tournament. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Elite Escavating Company of Ohio Incorporated in the amount of $4,982,213 for this project. I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Lindsay, did we have any comments? Thank you. Is there any questions for Paul this evening?
Hey, Paul, were you able to determine where the $97,000 increase from low bid to low bid was? Is it materials, is it labor, is it, I mean, will it help us, you know, moving forward of what to expect on future bid openings?
Yes, and actually, from our initial bid to the second bid, it was in the pipe material itself. It actually went up in the course of two months. So savings that we realized by providing better information to the bidders was actually offset by that material cost and also the pump station itself.
Was it a PVC material, or a?
Yes, it's PVC.
Anything you can design that doesn't utilize PVC moving forward might be best, huh?
Right, exactly.
Thanks. I just think that's good information for us, in, you know, whatever projects you're bidding out that have those components, at least we can adjust our estimates.
Yeah, and that's what we've been working to do, but just in this volatile market, it's been rather difficult.
All right, seeing no other comments. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Cram.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Resolution 08-22.
Extending the timelines in resolution 6121, temporarily permitting outdoor dining and eating areas beyond previously approved locations, temporarily permitting portable non-residential structures, and temporarily permitting certain signs.
I want to do so.
We have.
I'm going to take this one.
Megan. Oh, there you are. I didn't see you hiding over there. All right, Megan O'Callaghan is giving us our staff report from a new chair.
Good evening, members of council. As council is aware, the city manager declared a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic in March of 2020. In pursuant to his emergency authority, he also issued executive orders temporarily permitting outdoor dining and eating areas beyond those previously approved, portable non-residential structures, and certain temporary signs in front of business establishments. Anticipating the need to focus on economic recovery past the lifting of the state of emergency, city council previously passed resolutions in May and October of 2021 to allow the temporary extension of these executive orders to continue, and the resolution is set to expire today. To date, all of the permanent holders of previously existing temporary outdoor dining and temporary structures have complied with the deadline set forth in the resolution. We did receive a request from one property owner to further extend the deadline to allow for additional time to secure necessary approvals and construct a permanent outdoor seating solution, and city council considered that request at your last meeting and provided direction to staff regarding the request by instructing us to prepare legislation that would further extend the timelines of the executive orders through June 13th of 2022. The intent of this resolution is to support local businesses during this difficult time and to extend the expiration date to June 13th of 2022, at which time the expanded outdoor dining and seating and portable non-residential structures will be required to be removed, the site restored, and temporary signs removed as well. So staff recommends approval of resolution 8-22.
Thank you, Megan. I think we have public comment this evening concerning this? If you do, if you come forward and state your name and address.
North High Street, Tuches. Okay, two weeks. I was here last. Yeah, I mean, I'm very appreciative that tonight's vote on extending this until June, I thought it was 6, but 13th, very much appreciated. Been very fortunate to have the tent up this long. We did, after we had the meeting, we did meet with the construction company a few days later. You know, I guess looking back, if I could do it all over again, I probably would have done something, a different structure, something more permanent. When we met with the construction company, you know, looking at that structure the way it is, it really, the guy that met me there was a reporter, and he walked in there and said, "This is no tent, I mean, this is a building, this is a structure, and the task that we have in front of us is going to be a daunting one." And, you know, sitting in there that day for several hours, one of the the proposals that we gave to ARB was to use the existing structure, to change the roof, put in skylights, which would be the easiest transition for us. That would obviously not cost us as much hardship or financial burden, but it's ARB that we've taken the direction from, who has basically given us the direction to start from scratch and tear that existing structure down and start all over again, which is going to cause significant time and hardship, you know, design time and so forth, which, as I've stated before, I'm willing to do. In the last meeting that we had there, I think there were two of you that were on board to extend this into October. And as we sat in that structure that day, there were other things that became apparent to me, things like that there are POS terminals in that structure, which I'm going to have to pull out of there for four months, which helps us expedite service for my guests. There's rugs in there that are going to be pulled out. There's going to be nights where they're going to have two or three days of stretch of weather, where my servers will not make any money. We won't generate any sales. And asking for this to go until October 1, I didn't think was a unreasonable request under the circumstances of the city, taking their advice for us to tear that structure down and go through this hardship to start from scratch. But I'm not here to argue if it is June 6 or June 13. I mean, I'm just lucky that it's not February 28 today. So whatever the vote is, is what it is. But just so you know, when the structure comes down, what that structure has provided, we have seen a lot of people outside of Dublin travel to that patio, normal guests that we normally don't see in Dublin, Ohio. It's brought a very interesting and diverse crowd there. For those four months when that structure's down, every single day, we're going to get a lot of surprised people that are going to ask us every single day, it's down, why is it down? And that's going to happen all day, every day. And I did mention to you about those reservations. My clientele does not like showing up at a restaurant like mine without a reservation. They're going to have to show up on those nights, put their name in, and hope they get a table. Our clientele, that's a tough ask on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday night to say, "Hey, meet me at Tuchis for dinner," and we may get in, may wait an hour, hour and 15 minutes for a table. And right now, we don't have those problems because we take reservations. By removing that tent for four months, it's going to be a very difficult four months for the operation.
Thank you.
Okay.
I look to council for any questions or comments. Well, if there aren't any, my only comment is, is that I do believe that supporting local businesses is important. I understand that I might be on the minority side of this opinion. I think it would be important to help you reduce any unnecessary expenses. I think it's important that, this is an exception. You are going through ARB. You are building another structure. You're following our process. I would like to see you be able to do that for three and a half more months, but that is my own personal opinion. Any other comments? All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
No.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 09-22.
Appointing members to the City of Dublin Community Inclusion Advisory Committee and Chiefs Advisory Committee.
Introduction? All right. Thank you. Kirby Durth is our staff report.
Good evening, members of council. Resolution 922 before you this evening serves to appoint members to both the Community Inclusion Advisory Committee, or the C I A C, and the Chiefs Advisory Committee, or the C A C. Some of my friends in communication call it the kayak and the CAC. Don't know if that'll stick. In this presentation, I'll briefly walk you through our engagement efforts relative to recruiting and interviewing of potential employees or candidates. So the city's Communication and Public Information Division hosted the application process on the city's website for Boarding Commission applications, or fuelthefuture.dublinohiousa.gov. The opportunity to apply for both the C I A C and the C A C spanned the entirety of December 2021. While the posting was open to applications, Dublin Communications staff consistently advertised the openings via Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, WeChat, Nextdoor, and within the Dublin News Now emails. While the communications team pushed these opportunities to apply via official forums, the Office of the City Manager and the Division of Outreach and Engagement reached out directly to various community organizations provided within this slide in an effort to encourage individuals working or connected with these community organizations to apply or share the opportunity with their respective networks. Staff's outreach efforts resulted in 543 clicks on the link that we posted and shared with the aforementioned organizations. They were likely more individuals who were, that viewed the website organically. However, we were not able to track that. A total of 25 individuals applied to be on the C I A C and the C A C. However, to ensure maximum participation, the city manager decided that there should only be one individual to serve on both as a liaison. Interviews were awarded to those who showcased connectivity to diverse perspectives within their application or resume. Within this context, we defined connectivity as formal or informal engagement with nonprofit associations, community organizations, or professional opportunities. Special consideration was also given to those who shared their life experiences within their resume, cover letter, or application. Residents who applied were asked the following four questions: what experiences, whether they be lived or professional, or engagement within community organizations? Do you believe qualify you to represent the varying perspectives of diversity within Dublin? What strategies would you leverage to ensure that you bring a holistic understanding? Why is this work important? And what do you see as the greatest opportunities in the community for the city to make an impact? Of those who were interviewed, the individuals who were selected and proposed in the resolution tonight displayed unique perspectives formulated through formal and informal experiences that served to represent the varying perspectives of the community. Additionally, the candidates selected were capable of clearly explaining their strategies for further engagement to ensure that they represent a holistic understanding of the community's needs. And chosen candidates also conveyed a clear understanding as to the importance of inclusion within the city of Dublin, and also communicated at least one area of opportunity within the community that the city could make an impact. Staff would like to thank all of those who applied and those members of the Chiefs Advisory Committee who helped with the selection process. Staff also recommends passage of Resolution 922, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Kirby? No? Great work. It's amazing how many people applied. It's wonderful.
Yeah, we're very excited.
All right. Is there any public comment? All right. Thank you, Lindsay. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Let's see. Other business. Alcohol sales waiver for the 2020... Oh, I got that. Yes. 2022 Dublin Irish Festival. Allison Leroy is back.
Good evening again. This is sort of the companion piece to the other waiver, but by ordinance, we have to have council's permission to be able to sell alcohol in Kaufman Park during the Dublin Irish Festival. So that's just what this specific memo is requesting. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any public comment on this, Lindsay? All right. Counsel questions concerning this? I didn't think there would be. I will make a motion to approve the waiver and allow for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor at the 2022 Dublin Irish Festival in Kaufman Park. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Jenny, would you please call roll? Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
All right. Now, we're going to have a discussion about a holiday market recommendation, and Allison, would you like to lead that?
I know it's only February, but it's time to talk about Christmas already. So I wanted to just have a real brief presentation, show you some photos about holiday/Christmas/winter markets. We've been calling them all sorts of different things. But we did, Councilmember DeRosa came to us in December. Actually, I think it was the day of the tree lighting that we met about it. And she had some great ideas, and I think you all had the report to review that she put together on various winter markets and holiday markets that are in Europe. So staff kind of looked into some different things. One of the things we definitely noticed that German and European Christmas markets drive a lot of visitor traffic to the area. I think it kind of goes with what Scott was saying earlier, that, you know, we know that December is our lowest time, and really, you saw the numbers he was reporting before, but this 45% to 55% is from 2019 and before. So when you're seeing those 70 numbers, you know, we know that this is a time that we need some help at those times. So some of the things about the holiday markets, there's always a market centerpiece. So whether it's a church, or a huge tree, or a castle, or something like that, there's always kind of an identifier mark. The lighting is obviously super important. Most of this happens at night. These Christmas markets always run pretty much through the season of Lent. Sometimes they go a little later. They may go after Christmas into New Year's, New Year's Day, those kind of times. There's lots of music and entertainment. There's outdoor food and dining. A lot of it, you know, you have the mulled wine. You have roasted chestnuts. You have all those yummy foods you can eat. They're almost always in wooden huts. So you can kind of see, we have this picture here that shows you one of those wooden huts, and you can really see the decoration that goes into those. And there's a lot of great Christmas shopping, but one of the things we really talked about is just that feeling that you get when you're there with the whole markets. We did look at some US markets to see how they were doing it. We know that it's not necessarily comparable to the European markets, but we did look at quite a few throughout the country, both small markets and larger markets. And there was some research that was in your packet. One of the things we wanted to show you is, I'm going to say it wrong. I always forget if it's Carmel or Carmel, but whatever. I think it's Carmel. Yeah? Carmel, sure. So you can see what I was talking about before, how they actually built a quite intensive centerpiece there. If you see, that's their Performing Arts Center, I believe, in the middle, but to the right, they built one of those, if you've ever seen those Christmas where you light it and it goes around, they built a huge one. And that really, I think, has really propelled their market. They're a newer one. They've only been around about five or six years, but they've grown and been named as one of the top in the country. So all we're asking tonight is to refer the discussion of holiday markets to the Public Services Committee for the next meeting. At that point, we'll be looking at what kind of research we need to do to really see whether we want to go further with this, or what other information we need to do to get a decision whether we'd want to move into something like this for Dublin.
All right. Are there any comments? All right. Would you like to speak on this?
Thank you. I know you've probably all had an opportunity to read the pretty detailed write-up that I did. I've had the very good fortune to attend several of these over multiple years across Europe, and they are just magical in every way. And when thinking about why we would want to do here, bring something like this, certainly there's quality of life aspects, and I won't belabor them. They're in the report. And then certainly with Scott's conversation tonight during the winter months, it's a huge economic driver. One of the things that was not easy to do from the internet, and because a lot of this really wouldn't necessarily be in English, is to find some of the economic underpinnings of this. Cities have multiple ones of these. There are operating companies that do this. It's absolutely doable to figure out what it would cost to operate and do this, but it is not something that is easily accessible. So that would be additional work, and that's why Allison wasn't able to bring it forward tonight for conversation. But what I'm hopeful is that it's worth a referral and some research. We do festivals, and we do them well. And as we know, there's really nothing in that six-month period from the Irish Fest to St. Patty's Day. So hopefully you'll think it's worth a conversation, and I'm pleased and excited that I'm on the Public Services Committee, and so I'll get to work on it if it goes there. So I think it's worth at least investigating. And I thank you, Allison, for the work and staff's work on this. Thank you.
Could you go back one slide, please? So that big white building, what is that again?
Sorry. I think that's their Performing Arts Center. So that's there all the time. When we were doing the research on it, what was great is... Oh, now you want a Performing Arts Center.
Interesting.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And did you say it has 1,200 seats?
I guess it must.
You didn't say that.
I must have just known that.
I love the idea of both the Performing Arts Center and the holiday market.
That's strategic, I'll say. Any other comments on this? Can we get a consensus on how one feels about moving this to study in the Public Services Committee?
I think that's a good place to put it. I think it's worthy of a discussion. You know, it doesn't mean we're necessarily going to do it, but I do think it's worthy of a looksee.
That way. I know I feel that way. So I think it is. And thank you, Councilman DeRosa, for bringing it forward. It's a fascinating conversation, and it'd be wonderful if you could pull that off. So I will make a motion to refer this topic to the Public Services Committee for further discussion. I would like a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, Allison. Our next topic is 2022 debt financing discussion. Our staff report is once again with Matt Stifler.
Thank you. Good evening again, members of council. There are a couple of policy questions that I'm bringing before you tonight, as we will be bringing forward ordinances related to bond issuances at next Monday's council meeting. There'll be an ordinance on the water projects and the sewer projects that were proposed to be debt-funded in our most recent CIP. So in addition to that, there are a couple other questions of ordinances that could be brought forward. The policy question, first policy question is, should staff proceed with an ordinance to refund bonds issued by the city in 2020? Staff is recommending that we proceed to refund these bonds based on the policy guidance provided by the city's debt policy. Regarding this bond issue, the financing team will be the same financing team we've assembled for the last several bond issuances, that being Baker Tilly as our municipal advisor, and Chris Franzman with Squire Patton Boggs as our bond counsel. The 2020 bonds consist of two separate projects with two separate funding sources. Originally, 2.36 million was issued in 2020 for the Dublin Road Water Tower. Those payments ranged from 2013 to 2032. We have the opportunity to refund 1.35 million in principal, and that refunding will make the payments last from 2023 to 2032, essentially mirroring the current repayment schedule. So we will not be making the bonds repaid faster or slower with this refunding. Similarly, for the sewer fund, we issued 2.54 million in 2020 with the same payment schedule. We will be able to refund a little under 1.5 million, again, with an expectation that we'll keep the payment schedule the same. According to our debt policy, the highlighted portion talks about the present value savings being between 3% and 5% is something the city should do, and even under that could be considered if it's in the best interest of the city. So looking at that as a standalone offering, which means if we were to issue this bond refunding with no other debt, we would see savings of approximately 4.3% or $113,000. So this, as a standalone offering, would qualify for refunding under our current policy. Now, as we'll kind of talk about later, there are a lot of fixed costs associated with a bond offering. So by combining this refunding with the water and sewer debt projects funded by our CIP, we can realize significant savings that would increase the net present value of refunding these bonds from $113,000 to $199,000, increasing our savings percentage from 4.3% to 7.8%, which greatly exceeds the policy guidance. Kind of walking through why that occurs. On a standalone bond offering, the costs of issuance, as I've circled here, are $123,930, and that is a cost to issue $2.63 million in debt. If we were to issue $8.74 million in debt, the cost of issuance only increases to $136,000, thereby kind of demonstrating the highly fixed nature of these costs. thereby kind of demonstrating the highly fixed nature of these costs. We can allocate those costs proportionally across all three projects. So debt funding costs of issuance that were $113,000 are now below $40,000, which gives you the significant kind of change in savings. As far as timeline goes, we would have a first hearing on these ordinances next Monday, with a second hearing later in March. We would be able to receive a rating for these bonds by Moody's early in April. We would expect to price these bonds at the end of April and close in early May. That would allow us to fund the debt-funded projects in the CIP and close these bonds within the appropriate window to refund them. Here is a refunding repayment schedule that kind of details. The current 2020 bond schedule is in that fifth column. An estimate of what the 2022 bond repayment schedule might look like is in that fourth column, and you can see there that identifies savings of $188,000. The net present value of these savings actually increases, and this is a little odd, but the principal payments on the current bonds are due June 1st. The principal payments on the bonds that we would refund would be due December 1st. So we would essentially have six months for 10 years of additional principal that we would earn interest on, which amounts to five years more interest on about $250,000, which changes all of the math in a way that's really unconventional. But that's kind of the situation that we would be in here. It is unusual for our bonds to have a 6-1 principal date. All of our other bonds are on 12-1s. These are the only ones that are different. I don't know why they were different, but after this refunding, they wouldn't be. Then we get back to the policy question about refunding these bonds and staff's recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And just to be clear, you're just looking for directions so that you can go forward to bring this into the next meeting?
Correct. I'm just looking for confirmation that you'd like to see an ordinance on this.
All right. Is there any public comment on this, Lindsay? All right. Any discussion or comments on this?
Matt, is it the 363 reoffering premium that comes back to us?
Which slide are you looking at? I'm sorry?
Is it the 363 that comes back that we can use to apply against principal?
Yes.
Okay.
That was in the standalone 363. In the combined, there's actually 782, $782,000 in reoffering premium that would come back to us. So the bond size changes the demand and changes the amount of premium we would get per offering.
And you'll use that for what?
We'll use that to pay down the principal. So we will have $2.8 million in principal outstanding pre-refunding, and post-refunding we'll have $2.5 million in outstanding principal.
Any other questions by anyone? Kathy?
Yeah. First of all, thank you for your work on this, Matt. This is excellent. I'm just curious what bond rates are today, what they were here, and what they are today, just background information.
So last time we sold bonds, we were able to get them at a true interest cost of .94, which was phenomenal. They estimated these rates prior to the Ukrainian conflict at just under 2. Bond rates have gone down substantially since that time, so I would expect that we would be able to be under 2.
What were they in 12 when they were done?
I don't know. I'd have to look at that.
Be recognized?
I think this is a great idea. I mean, it falls squarely within the policy that, I mean, it makes really good sense across the board for a public entity to do this with this type of savings.
I agree. Do we have a consensus on that? I see nodding heads. I think you have your direction.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All that explanation. Municipal bonds are a very complicated thing, and you do a great job of explaining it. I appreciate it, Matt.
Appreciate that. The good news is, these bonds are sewer and water, so these savings will help those fund, which is, you know, a tremendous benefit. All right. The next policy question regards financing the 2021 Riverside Crossing Park project. So the staff recommended debt funding this project in September of 2020, based on the potential to utilize future Bridge Street TIF revenues to repay this debt. The city's current financial condition makes finalizing a decision to cash finance this project at this time, or potentially later in '22, an attractive option that is available to council. So just to kind of reorient, in September of 2020, staff was given direction to advance the funding of $5.7 million from the general fund for the 2021 phase of the Riverside Crossing Park project. A final determination on that funding was to be made at a later date. So this picture here kind of displays to you, the areas in orange are that 2021 project. This is not the promenade, which is in blue, that's off in 2024, and it's not the pre-work that occurred in 2020 regarding the plaza. So this really represents that orange phase for the 2021 project. The important thing here is that there is a reimbursement period. There's a hard deadline and a bit of a softer deadline. The hard deadline is imposed upon us by the IRS, because when you're issuing tax-exempt debt, the IRS has a lot to say about that. And what they are basically saying is that our reimbursement period for issuing non-taxable debt related to this project ends on March 1st, 2023. In order to meet this timeline, we'd have to make a final determination regarding this project no later than November 2022. We could continue to defer this decision, and this is a bit of a softer deadline, until after the introduction of the proposed 2023 through 2027 CIP. The potential complication there is payments of $456,000 related to this debt could need to be programmed into that CIP, at least initially, in order to cover a decision to debt-finance this debt later in 2022. So if we wanted to avoid that kind of discussion and utilize those funds upfront, then making a decision no later than July would be helpful to staff in order to program essentially that $2.5 million over the course of the next five years as efficiently as possible. So if we were to proceed with debt financing, the debt finance cost of $5.7 million over 20 years is about $456,000 per year for 20 years. When debt proceeds are received, the general fund balance would increase by $5.7 million. The city's outstanding debt would be increased by the same $5.7 million amount. Current outstanding debt is $175 million. This amount would increase to $181.4 million. Excuse me. This debt issuance would be in compliance with the city's debt policy and our general fund policy. If we were to proceed with cash financing, the general fund would see an increase in revenues and expenditures of $5.7 million in 2022, but no net change in fund balance. The city's outstanding debt would not be increased in any way, and it is in compliance with our general fund and debt policy. Regarding the debt metrics that we discussed whenever we issued debt, I have three different scenarios here: continued deferral, cash, and then debt financing. If we continue to defer, the general fund balance remains unchanged at $63.3 million and just under 60% as a percentage of our revised expenditures. If we decided to proceed with cash financing, the general fund balance would be unchanged, but because expenditures would increase by the amount transferred, we have a slight reduction in the general fund balance to cover that increase in expenditures. If we were to debt-finance it, the general fund balance obviously increases by that $5.7 million, and we see the corresponding increase to 64%. All of these decisions are within the policy guidance of above 50%. Metric two, the general fund is a percentage of debt service. Again, in all three of these scenarios, the general fund balance is in excess of the metric's requirement. Regarding metric three, it's historical in nature. It doesn't really matter which choice you make, it's unchanged, but I just put it here for information and completeness. The general fund balance fell in 2019 and 2021. In 19, there was a large advance to cover the debt service for the park project at the end of that year. And in 2021, we made substantial investments in land acquisition. So the reasons for those are well-known and are associated with non-recurring purchases. Regarding income tax-supported debt to operating revenues, the top, whether you do deferral or cash, the numbers are the same, debt changes to the bottom. Basically, that $456,000 gets added to the amount that needs income tax repayment. You can see that under all scenarios, we are within the guidance provided by this metric. So the policy question is, should the park financing discussion, decision regarding this park be finalized? Your policy options are to proceed with debt financing at this time, to proceed with cash financing at this time, to defer the decision until July, or to defer the decision until November.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any comments? Thank you. Discussion from council?
I have one question from you, and this is just, if we do the cash option, then is that the one you need to know for the capital improvements plan? Because it changes how we allocate the money we're using for that? Or either option, we can decide with or without the CIP?
Correct. Either option, if you decide now, would not impact the CIP. The only, if you deferred it, I would want to program that debt service payment as part of the start of the CIP. And then we'd have to make a decision either during or potentially after the CIP that might make funds that would otherwise be available, maybe not available.
Be available. Okay. That's, thanks.
So I'm gonna maybe make an unpopular argument for debt. And so I'm thinking, if the outlook, the future financial outlook for the city is in question to some extent due to tax revenue, and so we want to be conservative, one would think, well, if you want to be conservative, you don't go into more debt. If you have, let's say, $5.7 million in your pocket or in the bank, if you spend that $5.7 million, it's gone. You can't get it back. And if the rating of the city dropped, you wouldn't be able to borrow that money back. If you take a loan, issue a bond for 5.7, you still have the 5.7 in your pocket. You could, in theory, pay it off all at once if the outlook is rosy, but in the meantime, you can make those payments, which allow you to keep the majority of that principal in your pocket to use if there's a contingency. So, you know, while I would typically say, I really don't want to go into any more debt, it actually gives us more flexibility to do that than to use the cash.
Councilman DeRosa?
Thank you. I had a, I'll piggyback on Andy here for a second, but just for my own clarification, this has to be income tax financed. It is, this will not be TIF-funded, is that correct?
It is eligible to be TIF-funded, but there are not TIF funds available next year, or probably realistically in the next three to five years, to pay this debt service. It will likely be income tax-funded. At some future point, the development of Bridge Street as a district would likely make this TIF-funded, but that would be speculation on when I think that would occur.
But it is eligible.
It is eligible, correct.
And the conversation about the rate earlier for borrowing is pretty low. I think one of the things that this council has over the last few years has been, or I think fairly conservative in the amount of debt, and we have not really issued much debt. I would concur with Andy's perspective that when the rate is low and our borrowing has been low and some uncertainty, although maybe not significant, but still some uncertainty, might make sense with the rates that we're seeing here when we, that might make sense from my perspective to go ahead and do this now, and then knowing that we would have TIF potential down as well. And again, I say that because we have been very conservative in our debt financing over the last few years, and we talk about it, and I appreciate these conversations very much in bringing that forward. But from my perspective, at this point, it probably does make sense to explore that or move down the debt side. Thank you.
Christina?
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with what the both of you have said. I'm very appreciative of staff and council working together to put these metrics together, because it really helps us to be able to see the full picture of exactly what it is we're talking about here. That's the whole point of having the policy and having the metrics. I feel very comfortable that a debt finance strategy here fits well within those markers. And for the reasons that both Andy and Kathy have said, to me, it would make sense to move forward at this time with a debt financing structure. I think with the uncertainty of income tax, with work from home and everything else, having the availability of that money to be able to do the things we need to do is really, really important. And that, for me, is sort of the linchpin in why I would make that recommendation to do the debt financing moving forward on this particular thing. But I very much appreciate the conversation and the adherence to these metrics that we've put together, because it truly helps facilitate the conversation. So thank you, Matt. You did a great job.
Chris?
Matt, you had 2% growth as your assumption on these numbers?
I did. I put 2% growth for operating revenue over this six-year period demonstrated here. If you use 1% growth, the percentages change slightly. The 6.8 goes to, it goes up by about 0.3%, and if you use 3%, it takes it down by 0.3%. So 2% seemed to be a break even, and there's no kind of a priori reason why 1, 2, or 3 would be more appropriate, so I chose 2.
Did you run those numbers at all if we had a 2% reduction?
We have not, but the operating revenue for 2022 is coming in steady at this point. And we don't know the future, but the income tax estimates for 2022 take into account a pretty significant decrease from the actuals that we saw in 2021. So I feel like, while these may not be as conservative as we've been historically, they're not necessarily unreasonable at this point as an estimating tool moving forward.
And did you look at the refund situation? You have an idea of refund exposure?
We are too early in that process, but I have spoken with the Director of Taxation about our refunds. We have seen an increase in refunds. Most people file in April regardless of whether they're getting a refund or whether they owe, so it's very difficult on February numbers to kind of future predict that. But there are questions about the refunds that remain outstanding.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
John, would you like to speak?
No, I agree. I think she'd go for the debt, and we'll see how things shake out here in the economy.
My question for you, Matt, would be, do you see a substantial benefit to waiting until July to make this decision?
You would potentially gain more relevant information if you waited until July. You would understand, I think I would be able to better understand and help project our tax refund situation. I don't know that our withholding situation is going to provide much clarity until July-ish, so I'm not certain that I think there's a lot of clarity to be gained there. There are significant costs, though, that maybe weren't present when we made the initial decision to delay. Interest rate environment is very different. There's a lot of chaos in that environment, whereas it had been substantially flat when we decided to delay the first time. It was almost seen as a not particularly costly option that was available to us. I'm not sure that's true anymore. Additionally, kind of funding this, if you made a decision to debt-finance this in July, we would have to do a short-term note, which kind of increases costs on this issuance for at least the first year until we got it into cycle. So while there would be a benefit, there would be a real tangible cost to delay past this point, either in terms of the CIP costs or the borrowing costs associated with. Now, I'm not saying that's enough to necessarily be a tipping point, but they do exist.
In your opinion, do you believe that it is, I mean, obviously, we're looking to you as your recommendation, in your opinion, waiting, that cost is not worth the wait, considering that we would probably, and I'm hearing, that we would be debt-financing anyway? So I guess I would like to hear your opinion on which you think would be the preference.
In September of 2020, we recommended debt financing, and I stand by that recommendation, mainly because of the future opportunity to repay this with TIF proceeds. You really don't want to be using the general fund dollars to pay debt that very highly restricted TIF proceeds could be paying for in the future. I understand that it's not next year, so it's not immediate, but thinking of future councils and future finance directors, making sure that those appropriations are handled so that TIF financing is paying for this debt is a real benefit. is a real benefit. Not to mention, I think several council members mentioned, cash gives you flexibility that we're going to lose in November of 2022. And I don't know if we'll ever know enough to really know that we're comfortable moving forward. And under that timeline, it's probably a little more difficult. So the flexibility and the revenue source kind of make this debt financing my recommendation.
And your gut feeling is that the rates are probably going to go up, don't you think?
Well, rates went down. Whenever there's, you know, global crisis, everybody flees for safety. So bonds, significant, bond rates significantly retreated over the last two weeks. They'll probably continue to go down or stabilize a bit as this uncertainty unfolds. But the Fed is going to raise rates in March. They're going to raise rates again in May. It's likely that those are already priced into the market to some degree. So as long as we don't see a 3/4 or a 1 point, we're probably fine. And those are probably off the table with the uncertainty in the world. So rates are likely to stay about where they're at, which makes me think we'll be able to get under that 2% number.
Okay.
I'm not going to promise that, but I think that's, that's where we're at today.
Well, it seems as if the consensus here with head nods is to go ahead and have Matt bring this forward to us at the next meeting.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. The next topic is shared use path and sidewalks, snow plowing, a CSAC referral, and our staff report is by Robert Rink.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I come before you this evening to request a referral to the Community Service Advisory Commission regarding the city's shared use path and sidewalks, snow plowing program. There's currently approximately 145 miles of shared use paths and 150 miles of sidewalks in the city of Dublin. During each public services staff clears approximately 33 miles of shared use path and 15 miles of sidewalk. Staff conducts periodic assessments of its snow plowing program in terms of practices and priorities, and this includes plowing of shared use path and sidewalks. The last time staff reviewed this issue with CSAC was in August 2019. Some of the items staff will review with CSAC should this referral be approved include an analysis of the city's current shared use path plowing priorities, particularly as it relates to the density of residents near shared use paths, the potential of improving city service, including the potential of creating walkable circular routes of cleared shared use path or sidewalk in different areas of the city, and what, if we were to come forward with a recommendation for improved service, any increase in operating cost or capital costs associated with those services. So we do recommend that council refer this to CSAC for further discussion and potential recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any public comment on this one? No. All right. Council's questions or discussion on this? None? All right. Well, at look, we will be referring this to CSAC unless there's, I'm sorry, yes, while we are getting ready to do that. I will make a motion to refer this topic to CSAC for further discussion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please go roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
All right. Staff comments?
I have a couple of topics to highlight this evening, starting with a Rumki recycling update. Rumki is now accepting disposable paper, plastic, and aluminum cups in its recycling program, which is great news. That's a significant step forward in the sustainability movement and is expected to increase our diversion rate. We know that sustainability is important to council and the community, and we want to thank Rumki for working with the end users to develop solutions for expanding recycling options. Staff is working to get out the message to residents and will continue to work with Rumki and SUECO on educating the public about these new options for recycling rates. So you're going to see communications coming out from CPI on that. And a reminder that we're coming up on three exciting days in Dublin. The State of the City event will be Thursday, March 10, with a community reception beginning at 6:00 PM, followed by the presentation at 7:00 PM. The venue for the event this year is the Exchange at Bridge Park. And then on Friday, March 11, will be the Riverside Celebration. This grand dedication event celebrates both the Dublin Link and Riverside Crossing Park. The festivities will begin at 6:00 PM at the East Plaza and will include plaque unveilings, a brief pyrotechnics display, choreographed light show on the link, close proximity fireworks, and other entertainment. And then the fun continues on Saturday, March 12, with the Greenest Grandest St. Patrick's Day Parade. The day begins with the pancake breakfast presented by the Dublin Lions Club at Selles Middle School from 7:30 to 11:00 AM, followed by the parade at 11:00 AM and extended Dora hours from noon to 10:00 PM. So we hope to see everybody there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is our council reports, our committee reports. Administrative Committee, Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Thank you. Yes, I had three things this evening. I'm going to begin with the larger of those. In your packet, there was some background information about discussions that the administrative committee had at our February 2 meeting related to the creation of this new liaison role. I know I briefly touched on it at the end of council meeting last time, but I just wanted to spend a couple more minutes on it, if I could, please, and get feedback. And if council agrees, we will bring forth a resolution at the next meeting. So in summary, the committee commented, or the committee discussed this creation of the new role and agreed there would be some, if you will, fundamental things that this new role would be, these new liaison roles, primarily to be a resource and a point of contact for any questions concerning boards and commissions that they might have. Secondly, to provide a historical context and to share relevant legislative history regarding council actions on an as-needed basis. The liaison also to help facilitating training opportunities, which we've spoken a fair bit about, and planning for future and joint events, our annual joint meeting, for example. And then certainly to report any necessary communication between the boards and the commissions and the council. There was discussion that, important of what the liaisons do, that there is also some important discussion that the liaison will not be providing direction or influencing any decision of a board or a commission. The committee also discussed what format these new liaisons would take and what type that communication is. And after a discussion with staff and the committee and council, was the recommendation of the committee that the board and commission chair and the vice chairs set and establish regular meetings of those. The frequency would be determined by the liaison and the chair, vice chair of the particular board and commission. For reasons we just stated about not providing specific direction or influencing decisions of a board or commission, it was determined by the committee that the recommendation is that the liaison would generally not attend either a board or commission meeting or an agenda meeting. At the end of the discussion of the roles, responsibilities, and sort of meeting cadence, we also talked about, on what boards and commissions would a liaison be appointed. And it was the recommendation of the committee that council would appoint a liaison only for planning and zoning and for ARB at this time, partly just to see how it goes and we learn from this new created role, and then come back together as a group and reevaluate the needs for a liaison for other boards and commissions later that year. So that is the recommendation. And if the, it is the will of this group, then afterwards, we would direct staff, I think, to provide and reflect these roles and responsibilities in our council rules of order. That's where it seems to be the logical place to put it because that's where we talk about other boards and commission activities. So we, what decisions are made, we would ask the staff to update those and then bring back those updates because any updates to the council rules of orders would have to be adopted through a resolution. And if that makes sense, we would bring that back at our March 7 meeting. So I had a couple other things, but I will pause there, Mayor, for comment.
Is there any public comment on this? No. Jennifer, did you want to speak to this at all?
Vice Mayor DeRosa summarized everything beautifully, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Any questions or discussion concerning this from council?
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a comment. So regarding, they gave us some proposed language. Well, first of all, they gave us a couple ordinances, like two sample ordinances, and then they gave us some sample language. The only one I had issue with was C. It says, "Members who serve as liaison should not be advocates for the board or commission or give direction or influence." I just think that needs to be reworded in a little bit. I mean, I think that the point was, we don't want them to influence decisions during a meeting. I mean, obviously, we want to give them some direction and advocate for helping them in ways. So I think that just needs revised for the intent, the intent being, we don't want the council member to have undue influence during a meeting where it's going to influence a vote. Also, it didn't occur to me that, until I saw those other sample ordinances, that we should make, I really think, if we're going through this process to define what a liaison is, we should also define a liaison to our, for our other positions that we have, that we are liaisons to the schools and to Washington Township and the Arts Council, because these sample ordinances had that, and they had some language about how a council should be a liaison to an organization. So if we're going to change our code and add that, I believe we should take care of all the liaison roles at this time. I mean, we're not, we're keeping it open and broad that says, in what they've suggested, that we're not specifying ARB or PNC. We're saying any of the city boards and commissions, but I think we should also add, or liaisons with our community organizations, and put some definitions around this.
I think this makes it very difficult to be liaison in these two instances because in the other instances where we have liaisons, you go to a meeting and you participate in some conversation. In order to be this liaison, you're going to have to seek out a member, maybe it's the chair, maybe it's somebody else, and have in-schedule conversations. And they're going to be conversations with likely a single person at a time. So I think this makes it very difficult to be a liaison and to have any, you know, maybe it would just fall back to the admin committee then to, what does the liaison do? If they can't attend meetings and they can't attend an agenda meeting, and what information, so I have here on this report that I'm supposed to give a report about the Planning and Zoning Commission. What would I say if I didn't have the opportunity to attend any meetings? Y'all get the minutes. Could I come in? Again, I think that was one of the things that the group talked about because this is a newly created role. So the first part- What's a newly created role? This liaison role for our boards and commissions. We don't have such an animal, right? We don't have a liaison to planning and zoning, or we don't have a liaison to those. We've had a liaison to planning and zoning for, since I was first on the planning commission in what? Who was that?
We've had the member set. Council has sometimes had a member set. And then we did have agenda meetings at one point in time, and that was probably 10 years ago.
I would say probably for the last 10 or 12 years, we've had a liaison role. To the planning and zoning? Mm-hmm. And who was that? It was, when I was first on the planning commission, it was Tom McCash. Then it was Rick Gerber. Then it was Amy Saleh. And then I can't list them all. You mean as members of the board? They were members. I mean, Jane served as our member, but was that- Some yes and some no. Rick was a liaison in terms of, he was not a member of the planning commission, but he was the liaison role. So we've had these roles for 10 or 12 years. So to that end, that what the group worked on was what was that role, and there are four or five bullet points. So if we're saying that we want to extend or change those, so again, what we discussed at the committee meeting was that the role of that liaison would be a resource and a point of contact if there are questions or concerns, to provide a historical context and relevant legislative history, et cetera, so forth. So there's several roles and responsibilities, and those roles and responsibilities are not tied to an individual meeting. So I'm not sure how not attending an individual meeting changes what those roles and responsibilities are. So I'm not clear on that. I'm not clear on how you'd gather the information if you don't attend anything.
Andy?
So what I envision, let's say that, let's say she's the liaison to the ARB. I don't want to volunteer for anything, but she would, she would sit through the meetings and gain perspective as to kind of the direction that ARB is going, trends. Then she can report back to council, you know, FYI, in the last year, three structures have been demolished, you know? We're all privy to those minutes, but being spoon-fed by a liaison at a meeting may be more helpful than it being incumbent on all of us to read those minutes and know what is happening in our boards and commissions. And then if, because it's a liaison to me, is working two different directions. We're bringing information back from ARB, and we are providing guidance and information to ARB. That would be a somewhat casual meeting between the liaison and the chairperson. You know, just so you know, in general, our, our policy, council policy is this. And I've noticed over the last three months, we've been sort of deviating or leaning this direction. So it's incumbent on you as the chair to kind of pull the commission back this direction. That's, that's what I envision. I was on ARB, and I advocated to stay on ARB when I joined council because I thought it was important for somebody to be in tune with what was going on in historic district. And my objective really was to see, you know, what the direction that we were heading and what's happening on that, that board or commission. And then I would report back to council, as I, we do for these different committees, what's going on.
Christina.
Thank you. So I, I would tend to agree that I don't think it's a great idea if you're going to have a council liaison for that council liaison to go to the actual board or commission meetings, because I do think a council presence in the room carries a certain weight. I think personally that if it were me, if I were the liaison, I would want to go to the agenda meetings. And then I think having, you know, regular meetings with the chair, vice chair would be fine, but you could do those at the same time, right? You could have a portion of that agenda meeting, which is, hey, this is our touch base. You know, I wanted to talk to you about some things that, some directions that council is headed in. I think it needs to be made very clear that there should be no undue influence. I think we're all professionals here. I mean, we get told all the time, be mindful of your public records comments, be mindful of the things that you say to developers, be mindful. We get that direction all the time. We get reminders all the time, as we should. And I think that we have to have some level of trust in the professionalism of whomever it is that we appoint as liaison, that they're going to adhere to the restrictions, if you will, around the language that they're allowed to use. And I do think that it's incumbent upon each of us to respect that and to follow that. And if we can't have that trust in each other to be able to do that, then I don't know how you have any liaisons. It wouldn't make any sense at all. But I do think it's difficult as a board or commission member to not understand the direction that council wants to go. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to be able to help have that connection with them. But I don't want to do it at such a place that's so restrictive that it makes it painful for both the board and commission members and for the council member who's the liaison. I think there's a balance there. I'm not sure we've quite hit that balance.
And Danny's point, I think all the meetings are streamed now, so we could all, any of us could watch any of them and know what's going on or read the minutes. So, I mean, I really do think the value is more in before the meeting, likely the agenda meeting, if they have questions on policy related, oh, it's coming up today that we're doing this. What's your policy on X, Y, and Z? What's your policy on X, Y, and Z? I mean, it's been happening, so I don't know why it can't. We, you know, we're just putting a, I guess, clarification that we're talking about policy and legislative history.
I can tell you, you know, in the two, I've been to two agenda meetings since I've been the liaison. And one was, and really, there was only two things that, that we discussed in any real level of detail, was the importance of connectivity in an application coming forward and saying, you know, what is council, what are their concerns relative to these things? And I said, "These are connectivity, that, you know, this adjacent site may redevelop to something else." And really just giving the perspective of what's important to us, right? That access, accessibility, and future land use. Those have really been the topics that has surrounded. And to just hammer home, consistency. Be consistent, be consistent. You know, what, make sure that whatever you do here, you do over there. And not dissecting an individual plan to a great deal, but just saying, "We need you to be a consistent body. We need to have a unified, consistent voice. This is what developers want in this community. They want predictability, they want..." And, you know, "We're not asking you to sacrifice quality, but we are asking..." So those are the, that's the tenor of the conversation in those agenda meetings. I just don't know what I would do as a liaison. I hate to ask our volunteer planning and zoning commissioners for additional time to meet with me at another time to have a conversation. I wouldn't feel very good about doing that on, you know, just so that I could report at least monthly, to have those, those meetings monthly would be it. So, you know, I don't necessarily support this. I, I think that, that there should not be a council member that has a vote in, in the planning meeting. I think because that gives, our vote carries more weight, and that gives us two opportunities to vote on one piece of legislation. And I don't believe in my heart of hearts that that's the right thing to do. But attending the agenda meeting and help guiding them of saying, "These are the things that are important to council," not, "Is that the right color brick?" That's not the conversation that we have at all. It's, you know, are these the right, is this the right direction for us to go? So I wouldn't be supportive of it as it's written, but I think it's important that we have an opportunity, if we're going to be a liaison, that we have an opportunity to interact.
Kathy, you wanted to respond?
No, I think it's, it sounds like we have enough that we should probably take this back to committee and have some more conversation. That's what it sounds like to me. And I don't know if that is agreeable. And I don't know if staff and/or legal counsel had a comment on this before we even moved forward, but it sounds like we should probably take that back. To the group again?
That's fine. And I've been taking notes, so I think I can come up with some modified language to some of your points. And I think that we can look at a way where we could structure it and get a little bit more parameters for how we can proceed.
My final comments would be simply, I agree with Councilman Cram, because I do think that this is an opportunity. We are liaisons to quite a few other organizations. And some of the examples here really are much more broad than these. And I think it's worth taking a look at, because I think we're going to get ourselves into some hot water if we don't have some parameters on that. Secondly, I believe that there, generally, you should not be, you should not be attending the meetings, because they are online. But I don't think you should be prohibited from attending the meeting, because I think there will be times that you'll want to. I think it's really important, and I think in the language when we go forward, to say that you can be an advocate without giving full direction. I mean, I think it's very difficult to speak for the entire council when you're the liaison. I think that you can say, "This is my opinion, that I believe that council believes in this." But if there's questions about that, I think in some ways, we have to be sure that we're clear on, on the advice. And because I think, I agree that the agenda meeting is the perfect place, because it gives you the opportunity, if you have a question that comes from a commission member or chair, you have the opportunity to follow up before the next meeting and get that answered for them. So, you know, I like some of the broad languages in some of the others, and I'd like to see a little bit more extensive language included. Those are my thoughts. John?
You know, I think, you know, being a liaison to a lot of these committees over the years, I think what I found is that you sort of hang back, let them lead the discussion, see what they're saying, and then your position really comes into, you know, say it's the Arts Council, and they're going into some tangent on something or other. You actually know that, you know, there might be land acquired, and that direction is okay. So you can give them some direction and stay out of the discussion, but at least answer their questions. Same way with the Veterans Committee and the other committees. You know, an idea comes up, and you can analyze the idea, and they're looking towards you and saying, you know, "You think council will support this?" And I think that's where we come in as being an important part of it. You know, "This sounds like a doable thing, and I think, you know, it's something that council would back." You know, and I think that's our position. But, you know, not to lead the discussion, but to stay back and let them, because we appointed them to these positions, but then give them guidance when they might need it. Thank you.
All right.
One other comment. So to your point, you had mentioned something about saying your personal opinion. And I just want to say, I don't think that's the, the point of the liaison. I think the liaison, and it's, in example number two that they gave us, there's a line in there that says, "A council member liaison is acting as representative of the full council." So, and such has no authority to provide any direction or guidance to the committee, other than that of full council. So if you're not sure, I don't think you should be leading them to believe something unless you're sure that the whole council believes it. If you don't know, you can say, "I can take it back to council and find out." But I don't think we should be in a spot where we're saying, "In my personal opinion."
I think that's what I was saying. That it shouldn't be the personal opinion, that if, that's why the agenda meeting is important, because you have the opportunity, if you don't know it, you can go backward, back and get the opinion that would be of council. So I think maybe you misunderstood what I said. At this point, unless there's any other discussion, I would-
I have two more. No, sorry.
Oh, on this, on the liaison?
No, on the admin.
Okay. Should we go through the, to ref, all right. We'll let you finish, and then we can put the, refer this back to the committee. I was going to make a motion to refer this back to the-
Do we need to do that? I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah. Like to make a motion to refer the council liaison role back to the administration, Administrative Committee for further discussion. May I have a second?
A second.
All right. Jenny, could you please call roll?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
All right, now.
I had just a couple other things from the Admin Committee. We are meeting tomorrow to begin interviews for our open boards and commissions, to stay on that same theme. We had wonderful number of applicants this time, a large number of applicants. So we will, we will begin that work tomorrow, and then Jenny's going to work with us to schedule another time in March. We need to pick an evening in March to do our second round of interviews for that. So we'll need to do that before we leave here this evening. And then next week, we will also be conducting our annual performance reviews for staff that reports up to us, and so you please look for materials on that. So thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you. Public Services Committee?
Okay. So we had a discussion on the DORA, and it says here that Allison was going to give a presentation. I don't know, do you want to give a presentation? Or no? Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Since I pinched hit for the committee, I figured I would keep-
No problem.
Pinching for Allison, since she was not available. It's up to you, Councilmember Cram. I'll be happy to run through a presentation if you feel it will help clarify things. The memo is fairly clear on the, on the recommendation.
Right. So I would say that the, the only piece that changed since they brought it to us preliminarily, and that was that we had considered, for, for just the DORA boundary changes in submitting the application to the state, absolutely nothing changed. But our committee did consider and wanted to ask all of council if you agreed with the activation of the Dublin-Link Bridge and the East Plaza itself. So that was the only piece that's different from what was brought before. But that's not part of the state application that's going then.
I would say we either need to enforce the rules or change them.
Well, an interesting note, so we, the police department was at our meeting and said that it's really, they haven't seen any incidents at all on the bridge or in the plaza increase because of DORA. The other thing is, is they're allowed to carry an empty cup across the bridge.
Because that's not-
So to, to mess with policing people and to look into their cup is just, it's just not practical, because it's not illegal to carry a cup across the bridge. So it just made sense to activate the bridge and the plaza. So our recommendation from the committee was to activate the bridge and the plaza. That doesn't include the rest of the park and any of the grass area or anything like that. That would be an activation as needed because of a certain situation. This would just be the East Plaza getting across the bridge.
Before we go on further with the discussion from council, did we have any comments from citizens on this particular? Thank you. Does someone else want to be recognized concerning this?
I would only add that I think that is going to continue to be confusing in the park, as the park, you know, when you have the skating rink and you have, so, you know, rather than keep changing these, I think we need to have a really holistic view, because this is our second or our third time changing DORA boundaries. I think it's our second so far.
Matt? Did you have a?
It's the what?
First.
First time changing, second time applying for, for the boundaries to exist. If we-
You know, it never made sense the way we piecemealed this in anyway. And, you know, the bridge having two segments on either side, it never made any sense to me. So I think this is the ultimate obvious conclusion to the problem. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I guess at this point, the recommendation was, tell staff to apply for the overall boundary increase with the state, and then internally, for our own activation purposes, is to activate those additional streets that they told us about last time, and then also to activate the plaza in the bridge. That was what the recommendation of the committee was.
All right. I have a question for you. It was, it was kind of difficult to tell on here. Is the, is the parking garage, I know it's within the boundaries, but because there's an overlay of colors, is the parking garage considered a DORA appro, is considered within the DORA as-
Yes, but again, it does not have to be activated. It is, it is a potential event site-
Okay.
Or some other kind of activity that, we wanted to make sure we covered everything and allow the flexibility of council to make those changes as needed.
Can you just show for the public, because in case anyone's looking at this, to show the difference between the boundary and the, and the areas that can be activated and then the areas that are always open during the hours of? Can we do that so that there's no-
Yes, what you see on the slide now is the, the addition of DORA boundaries. So that would include, just for clarification of the discussion that was had, the bridge nor the plaza are currently part of that boundary. So we would have to wait for that boundary to exist to be able to activate that. So all of these other areas within those, within that geographic area in blue are the new DORA boundaries, in addition to the existing DORA boundaries. In historic Dublin, the only changes or additions would be to accommodate the coastal winehouse and then get better proximity to the parking lot from that location. So you can see that by the arrow on the right. It's just those two, two streets there. And then on the Bridge Park side, it's basically making sure that everything is activated to the west side of Moonee Street, and then the addition of the east side of Moonee Street for Bridge Park Parkway to accommodate the hotel that is in the DORA. And then, of course, the bridge and the plaza area, and the west plaza area is already active, so it's not included in the, in the activation component of this. So the timeline there would be in front of you there to process all of this.
And my, and my last question is, the, the Richards House, was that included in that then? That was, because the city is leasing. Okay. All right.
Matt, can you back up one slide? Why wouldn't we put all of the park in an area that we could activate at some point in time, rather than have to come back and adjust the boundaries if we wanted to expand it? So let's say that we do the, the winter market, Christmas market, and the spot for that is chosen to be in this park, then we, or something else, be it whatever it might be, why would we not want the flexibility to be able to activate the balance of the park?
I think, just from looking at this map here and just discussing with Allison, it does include the entire park in the boundary.
None of the maps indicate that.
What you see on the map here is, the area in blue is the new boundary area. The red is the react, where the activation components of that, that we would be pursuing.
And what's the green?
The green is just not picking up the blue hue, but that is lawn space there from the, the highlighted area.
So it picks up, it picks up the green, or picks up the blue on the north side, but it doesn't pick up the blue on the south side?
So this is a better illustration. I think the, the other one was trying to get us to understand the activation of the bridge component.
Would it, would it behoove us to go as far up as the path does to the north? So this looks like it ends at John Shields Parkway or at the tunnel.
I've been looking at these longer, so he, yeah. It has, I actually probably just need to change it and add that little triangle, because it's actually by the parcel, so because it's part of that whole parcel, that little triangle piece that's not showing on this map would actually be included. So I just need to show that visually on that map.
And was there any consideration to the Veterans Park?
I know it didn't come up in any of the conversations we had prior. Did it come, since I wasn't at the meeting?
No, it didn't.
No. Okay. Thanks.
All right. So I will, if there are any further questions, I will make a motion, direct the city manager to begin the application process. Is there a second?
Second.
Jenny, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Finance Committee? Ms. Aluto?
We don't, haven't had our first meeting yet.
Thank you. Community Development Committee?
Mr. Reiner?
I got to say that I sat through two interesting meetings, Political Services and Community Development Committee, and both of them were very possible or positive, and everybody, there was sort of consensus through all the voting. I was really impressed with my colleagues that everything went so well, and thank you to the staff. So just in short summary, the city entryway signs, the pedestal entryway sign was chosen. Staff will bring these CDC recommendations to the full council on March 21st for your consideration and direction, so everybody will have a say in them. The Champions Park, it was fairly well decided that the location for that park should be at the Kaufman Park Pavilion, because a lot of the hard surfaces on either side of the pavilion are now, are damaged, and it's a great way to repair it. And it's a place with high traffic, especially during the Irish Festival, where we could acknowledge the achievements of our students. And pretty much, we were heading in the direction of planting these things in the ground, sort of as pavers, so we could continue adding them, rather than a monolithic upright monument that you'd have to add to. So we're sort of in that direction right now. But again, you will be the final arbitrators of those decisions. Let's see, Sawmill Road interchange, the direction was more or less towards the least expensive option, and you will see that on March 21st meeting. And that was a basic improvement that ran anywhere from 500 and some thousand to, I think, 3 million or something. So, I think we sort of hung around the $500,000 mark, so that's it. And you'll get to see them all and participate in them all, so, thank you.
Thank you for your port. Ms. Aluto, Dublin Board of Education?
We still have not had the meetings get set up at this point, so.
Right. Still working on that. Vice Mayor DeRosa, US 3 corridor group.
Yeah, thank you. We did meet earlier this month, and it has been amazing, the continued amount of economic development all up and down that 33 corridor. I can't say that it's just continuing, it feels like it's accelerating, I mean, the rate that it's going. We did welcome Plain Cities Mayor Jody Carney to the group for the first time, and that's wonderful. So, now we have representation really up and down that corridor, so we're delighted to have them and their administrators joining that group. One of the things that the group has been working on is really sharing strategic plans with each other. And the next meeting, we're going to take a look collectively at the results of the 2020 census to see up and down that corridor as a, really as a composite, if you will, what's happening there and the implications for all of our joint strategic planning. So, good group, positive momentum, and I think that will be a very healthy discussion, and I'll be happy to report back the results of that after our next bi-monthly meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keeler, Logan Union Champagne County, US 33 corridor group.
So, at the last meeting, I think there were two more plat approvals for further development in Jerome Village. It's the gift that keeps on giving. I didn't realize it, but there are sort of like subsections. One is called the Villages Neighborhood. 165 more single-family homes.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner, Dublin Arts Council and Veterans.
You approved the last outdoor, every-two-year project, and looking forward to seeing that executed, and the meeting for that will be coming up here shortly. Veterans Committee, that meeting will be coming up here in a couple weeks also. Thank you.
Ms. Cram, Marshall Township?
I have not met with them yet, and I won't, all of their meetings coincide with meetings we have, so I haven't had a chance to go to any of their meetings. The first one I'll have a chance to go to, I believe, is the April meeting, so, unless I meet with them outside of their regular trustee meetings.
Ms. Grooms? Mineral Heart Regional Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning.
We have a nominating committee meeting tomorrow, so we'll be bringing forward to the, to MORPC, a new slate of executive committee members and an officer. We're having a passenger rail meeting. I'll be meeting with them on the second at the MORPC offices. The leadership from Amtrak will be in town, and we will be discussing the future of Amtrak and what that might be in Ohio. So, I'm looking forward to that conversation. Been really pushing the route from Chicago to Pittsburgh. That does a number of things for us as Dublin, but it also would help pick up for the intel development that it'll be having. It would really help solve possibly some of the workforce issues they might be having as people could ride rail out that direction. So, that is the, that is the, the direction that I think will, that MORPC will be bringing forward. Have an executive committee meeting there on the third. And then relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, you may have saw, have seen some of the recent applications relative to signed permits, and so, just trying to work with them to understand the importance of consistency and the importance of making sure that we, we think larger. We don't think about the application before us. We think about the context of the city. We think about what's going to happen on the neighboring parcels and those things. So, I really appreciate, they've got great leadership, and I really appreciate them and the opportunity to have those conversations and share with them a little bit about what's important to us as a group and what, how we want to interact with the development community and how they can really serve the city in that capacity. But they're doing a great job, and we've got some good folks on there, and looking forward to the interviews that we'll have coming shortly and new additions to that, to that organization.
Christina, would you like to start?
Sure. I'll keep it simple. I don't have anything. Yeah, I don't have anything.
All right. Thank you. Chris?
In your packet, you saw Dana and I memo from us on the, the summary of our workforce development meeting that we held here. You can all read that, so if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out to me and give me a call. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes, thank you. The mayor and I had an opportunity to attend the Central Ohio Honors 2022 reception, an event that was hosted here in Dublin. And as you recall from the proclamation, when A.J. Pollan was here, the program really benefited a wonderful group called the People Like Me Project, and it was inspiring, and it was fabulous, and thrilled that we were able to host it here, that we were able to attend. And I think we, the city of Dublin might get to host it again in the future, but it was a very uplifting and a wonderful opportunity to recognize real achievement and real building of youth in the community. So, it was wonderful. So, thank you for the opportunity to be there and represent the city.
Great. I'll just end with a couple of things. There is, the American Planning Association is having a meeting in San Diego that is April 30th to May 3rd, and it's a wonderful conference. If council or anyone wants to attend, I'm sure the planning group is going to be going to that, but it is still time to register for that if this is of an interest to the group. I want to encourage everyone to come out for the state of the city, for the opening of the bridge and the park. It's going to be a great community event, and I hope you all come. And then I would just like to make a request to hear a little bit maybe from staff on the entertainment upcoming for our events in the Fourth of July and the Dublin Irish Festival, just to get an update on that. But other than that, I have nothing else. So, if there are no, there are no other comments, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Hey, three and a half hour faster than you run it, baby.
That's pretty good. I'm really going to do it right before, I didn't want that, I didn't want that thing to hit.
It's only the ninth hour.